Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Um, Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Okay, is Mr. Harris online?
I think Mr. Harris is on the...
On the back.
The back one.
On the back one? Uh, can someone give him a call real quick so we can have... Okay.
Is that my call?
Yeah. Hey, Counselor Harris, how are you? Um, I'm gonna have you on speaker so you can participate in open session so you can get approval to go in the back, okay? Uh, I think you're probably on the one in the back and not the one in front. Uh, yes, they think that you're on the wrong one, but just stay there because we're gonna go back there in a second. Yeah, stay where you are. I'm just gonna put you on speaker now, okay? For the open session part.
Just tell him to say here.
Just say, just say here.
All right, at this time, is there a motion to allow Counselor Harris to participate remotely?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Uh, at this time, Mr. Harris, can you state for public record where you're conducting the meeting from and the reason you are partici- requesting to participate remotely?
I'm conducting from home for medical reasons.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A one to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, and Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A twenty-nine for the discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders, offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby, and... yep.
So moved. Oh, he ain't finished?
Because the city attorney didn't delete it out. She has it written in there twice.
Oh, whoa, okay.
The city attorney?
Uh, second.
In your closed session, motion. All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway. Is there a second?
No, 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 I seconded it.
You seconded it, okay. Counselor Pelham and then Counselor Holloway? All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Mayor, that was my mistake, not the city attorney.
Okay, well, just for future ones, because this is two meetings now in a row that it's been on there, so please delete it. Okay? All right.
All right, Counselor Harris, who's seeing you in the back?
Close session. Do I have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Some move.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilor Denton, seconded by Councilor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Here.
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, certification please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D, where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in the closed meeting. Motion discussed in closed meeting. Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, do I have a motion to appoint Mary French Elder Susan Benton and Philip Hughes to the ARB effective July 1, 2024? Oh, and Joseph Bailey, I'm sorry.
June 1?
Second.
July 1. Was it you, Ms. Pelham, that said Holloway and Ms. Pelham? Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Okay.
Point, I think there might be an issue with the names that was listed.
Just for information, Mr. Bailey's already on the board.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, if he's already on there, then we'll just, name would just be stricken then. All right, moving on to our regular meeting agenda. This will be our call to order. Can I have a roll call, please? All right.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Here.
Councilor Joyner?
Here.
Councilor Harris?
Here.
Councilor Denton?
Here.
Councilor Pelham?
Here.
Councilor Holloway?
Okay, we have a quorum for tonight. I want to thank the audience for coming out to tonight's city council meeting. I'd like to invite Evangelist Wright to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by Councilor Denton. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Let us bow before the Throne of Grace. Father God, we thank you for this day that you've provided us today. God, you granted us grace and mercy thus far, Lord. And Lord, we'll come together in this meeting. Father God, we're asking that you be here in the midst of us, Lord. Father God, grant each and every item that is to be discussed. Father God, may it be discussed in decency and in order, Father. We thank you, and we give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, is there a motion to amend or adopt the regular meeting agenda?
Some move.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilor Holloway, seconded by Councilor Denton. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
All right. All right, is there a motion to amend or?
Before you make that, would you remove C7 from the consent agenda?
Okay, so are you asking to do an amended motion to move C7?
No motion.
No motion, just to?
Just, I'm just saying to remove it. C7.
Okay.
Point of order.
All right, Councilor Holloway, your point of information. This is for the consent agenda?
Consent.
We just did the regular meeting. We did the regular agenda. So every meeting, we start out by adopting the regular agenda, then we move into adopting the consent agenda. She's asking to remove item C7.
She gotta make a motion.
Yeah, she got.
Something.
Okay.
She doesn't. She just requested to move it.
So.
Move it where?
Ms. Smith?
The question is what, Mr. Chairman?
So, the question is, can a member of council have a item removed from the consent agenda? Or does it have to go, become a motion?
In its proper form, it needs to be a motion, because it is printed on the agenda. So C7, she's asking, the request is that she removes C7. That request needs to be in the form of a motion.
Move it where? Don't have to make a motion. Is that what you're saying?
I think there's confusion.
There's some confusion going on.
A point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Consent agenda. I'll have it here if you need me to read it.
Is she asking?
So, all right, so, all right, so, hold on, let's let Councilor Denton read it, and then I'll go to your point of information.
The consent agenda is usually put near the start of the meeting. It is actually part of the regular agenda and can be made up of any number of items. Consent agenda should be so uncontroversial that it can be reasonably expected that it will be adopted with no debate or separate vote. The chair calls the consent agenda by saying, "The consent agenda is before you," then he asks. Chair responds, "To do so, a member does not need to be recognized." He just calls out the number, and the chair says, "Without objection, the remaining," or not without, excuse me, the chair responds, "Item number X is removed." When no more items are removed, the chair, without objection, the remaining items on the consent agenda will be adopted. Remember, no debate or separate vote is allowed on any item unless it is removed. I can keep reading. I've got several.
Hold on, just hold on. We got a point of information from Vice Mayor Gore, and then yourself.
Okay.
I just want to have clarity. It's not, it's not council rule. I just want to have clarity. Is she asking to remove it entirely, or is it to pull it out for a separate vote?
Do what now?
Are you asking to remove it entirely from the agenda, or are you asking to pull it out for a separate vote?
Pull it out from the consent agenda.
Yeah, and we do that. It is how it was worded.
All right, so.
I'm just pulling it out from the consent.
Yeah, for a separate vote.
Then we can decide where we want to put it.
Okay, so would you be amenable to doing an amendment to amend the consent agenda to remove C7 and to add it to R2?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to remove C7 and to make it R2. Now I'll second it. All right, is there any discussion? Council Pelham?
What is your reference that you're reading from?
This, I've got several, Councilor.
No, what you're reading from, who's quoting that?
Well.
Is that a state regulation, or just somebody's opinion?
IFC resource, I have.
IFC, who is that?
IFC resource, Robert's Rules of Order.
IFC, what?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
And that's where I read it from. And I would only say too, is that Robert Rules of Order, and he used words like usually and should be, and without objection. So locally, is what, what we go by, unless we, if we don't have anything, we go by Robert's Rules, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, and I don't know if it's written or not, but I know through 20 years of practice, what you just did, pulled it out and put it under reports, is what we normally do, not just, and make it a motion, not just to state it out loudly. So I don't know, is that a part of our rules, that we do it that way, or?
It's my understanding that this is common practice for the city council for what, well?
Yes.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Council Pelham?
No.
Council Holloway?
So we're moving on to regular business R2?
Yeah.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay. All right, moving on to information and presentations. The finance report by the Robert Bob Group.
Sorry, we're the finance committee tomorrow. I'm like, wait, is there something that goes before me? Is that me? Quick logistical question. I don't know why this isn't showing. I'm looking at my report here, but it's not showing there. Councilmember Harris, it's in your email, FYI, if you want to follow along. All right, well, it's been about a month since we've been here. It's good to see everyone. Today, we're going to get a little bit more of an extended update, and unfortunately, I've got no special guests to call upon, so it's just me. We are going to go through progress to date. We've had some good recent successes right up till this morning, and well, as always, we'll close with items that we need council movement on, which, there's not a lot, so. But let's go ahead and go first through the audit progress, because I know that's the most interest to everyone. Robinson Farmer Cox and RBG have established now a weekly. Guys, I think we lost this up here. I'm not sure.
It's the signal, it's gonna go.
It's okay, I'll go back, okay. We've established a weekly meeting on Thursdays. The reason is there's lots of questions, because we rebuilt everything from manual up, and like we said before, we didn't just do 20, we had to do 19 and/or get to a clean 20. So now, the auditors, Robinson Farmer Cox, are going back, and they are doing 19 over and 20. So it's really two years that they're doing, not one. We've had no issues to date. The communication has been excellent. We're expecting a finalization of that within April, and then at that point, we will now, we were supposed to hand over just 21, but now we're almost done with 22 for rebuilding those, so they'll likely, once we know that the way the process is done is good for them, it's kind of like when we built ours, it took us a long time to do the first year, and then we had sound methodology, and it's much faster to roll through. Same thing's going on with the audit firm, so they're double-checking the methodology, and then, once that rolls out of 19 and 20, we have 21 and 22 prepared and ready to upload, and we expect the timing for that handoff to be sometime in the next several weeks, but probably by the end of April. We are very much looking forward to having that signed off on as the first audit win for quite some time. We are continuing along for 2021 and 2022. We talked about this last time I was here, but I just wanted to remind everyone that there's been a large number of transactions that were processed by the bank that didn't make it into the city's general ledger. So we had to go through and manually put them all in, and now Robinson Farmer Cox is going back and checking that work to make their all, make sure that they're 100% of them are in. Reminder, for audit, you check for completeness and accuracy. So they're now going back and checking for completeness. We are waiting for the 2020 audit to come back until we give 2021, and 2021 and 2022 will be ready to go. I've now sort of made those the same date, and then we've got 2023 and 2024 coming. Assuming that the books close, as we're expecting them to, and the timing were closed, we're projecting out September 30th date for everything to go out to Robinson Farmer Cox, which would mean by the end of this year, this calendar year, you will be completely caught up and timely. That is the goal. So we'll keep you posted as we go. We will know much, much more once Robinson Farmer Cox signs off on the 1920. Any questions before I proceed forward? I know I just threw a lot at you guys.
Council Pelham, I'm sorry.
And I should say.
Council Joyner, then Council Pelham.
Be gentle, because Jack has the stomach flu, so I don't have any help.
Sorry. A significant volume of transactions. Can you, do you, can you?
It's about 150.
150, and was that just for one year?
And then we saw the same for 20 and 21. So we'll see what comes out of 22, 23.
All right.
Council Pelham?
When you say that RB Cox is doing it over, is that a cost to the city, or is that?
No.
They're doing it based on what they've already been paid?
There are, yeah, no, it's not a cost to the city, as far as I know. They're just doing their due diligence of the completeness of everything. Just as a.
Because it was their audit, correct?
Yeah, they've already, it's the same, it's the same audit. It's just we're doing it differently for this reason, right? So we had to make sure that we had everything complete and accurate, and so.
Doing it always because of those 150 transactions that were left out?
Yes, so everyone's looking at those, yes. But we feel very confident, because we actually built from the bank records on up.
And do they do anything about that, the audit with the wastewater, with the $6 million? Would they have any impact on that, the audit that they're doing over?
The audit of the wastewater, I'm not entirely sure. That's in a but, yeah, that's, huh.
That's for this year.
That's this year.
Oh, okay. Oh, fiscal year or 24 years?
Yes. Yeah, we're still historical on these.
Too many years, okay, thank you.
But the goal is to get caught up, of course, so that next year, when you're having this conversation, you're having it for the current fiscal year.
Any other, Vice Mayor Gore?
This is, you presented what you wanted to present, right?
Oh, there's more coming.
I'll wait till, my questions are in the later slides, so I'll wait.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going. I just wanted to do it piecemeal, since we've got so much today. All right, next piece, SOP and training progress. So we, everything's been drafted, and we are moving very quickly through the review process. We have a full-scale team on site next week. I think the numbers I looked at today for the treasurer alone, I think we've got 135 processes in total going through the treasurer's office next week for finalization. So the numbers are large, so when you look at these, 22 to 24, I can't remember what number, it's kind of. Um, so the numbers are large, so when you look at these, twenty-two to twenty-four, I can't remember what number, it's kind of misleading, because each one of these has multiple things under it, um, just to give you a scale of the kind of thing. Um, but I'm very pleased to show you that everything is, um, either drafted or complete. Um, and if you look at the, um, last two columns, you can see where they are in the process. Uh, we're about sixty percent through the review process, we're hoping to be done by the end of the year. At the same time during our downtime while we're waiting for the reviews to process through, we're starting to work on the training, um, medium and, um, the repository. So we're, for things that are complete, we're already developing training documents, and then we're working through how we want to lay out the repository so that it can be, um, maintained by whoever we transition this over to towards the end of the year. That was pretty, okay, next up, ERP consultant updates. Um, everything is actually moving along quite nicely here. Uh, we understand everything, with the exception of, if you look at the second slide here, um, the employee expense reimbursement, because of the late signature of, um, the documents for Tyler, they're actually not going to get to that until the twen- Tyler, not us, to the twenty-eighth of June. So for July, um, I'm going to use the very professional term of wonky. So, the numbers coming out of the employee expense reimbursement will be done both current with the AP as well as through the expense reimbursement module. Uh, but will be fine and auditable. Um, everything else is supposed to go in, uh, July one, and of course, if, you know, I'm most interested, of course, in the pool of cash, especially because we spent most of the day-to-day with our industry partners. Um, so it'll be very nice to know what's in the fund and where, where that money belongs to on a daily basis. So all of that information is going to appear by July one. Uh, there will also be training following through the process as well, um, both by Tyler as well as the documentation. Everything that is going in is now currently being, um, developed as part of our SRPs. So everything gets updated again July one. Any question on ERP? Yes?
Uh.
Question.
Is this one that you have for a question for? Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Gore, and then Counselor Joyner.
I just want to go back to the SOP one first.
Yeah.
Um.
What page?
It was before that, yeah.
Here.
Um, in regards to repository, uh, kind of what you guys are thinking in terms of a way to use this document, document management system, what we're, is it the internet or another software?
Well, what we're trying to do is to have it has no cost to the city, but have the most technologically sound, so there's multiple ways we're looking at it. Uh, there is a potential to, potential to do it within, um, munis, we can use the internet. Um, I believe there's one other option that we're looking at as well, the city also owns, but the idea is, ooh, no additional cost. So whatever gets us the best review functionality and the best way to lock down the controls without an additional cost to city is what we're gonna do.
And, um.
That's what's being evaluated now, so I don't have a clean answer for you, I probably will next month when we come here.
Okay, and who is going to be like the holder of the document to be the, the reviewer, changer, signer, um, that you have? Is it going to be the finance director or different line supervisors?
So because it is across all documents, our recommendation is that it's someone who comes directly underneath the city manager. So if there was going to be a deputy city manager or something along those lines, that that person do it, or a separate set aside. Um, sometimes I see it sitting in an HR capability as well. It, but finance is only one piece of this, right? We're here to make sure that the financials are where they are, but these go across treasury, they go across revenue, some of them go across HR, so we need something with a bigger lens. So our vision is to set it up and to set all the triggers up for you guys, and then, you know, when that is done, you know, I think it's about September, October, when everything is said and done, we'll then talk about who to transition over, but it should be someone above the director of finance.
So I, I noticed that you don't have the commissioner of revenue listed here, but one meeting you mentioned that they also had SOP work being done, so they are included in this batch, right? Because I, yeah, um, but I'm a, I'm a little confused as to what you're saying in terms of the higher arching, it makes sense, but it doesn't make sense, because, um, I would think citywide policies regarding procurement, um, some of the delineation in munis and some other things clearly citywide. But if we getting down into service lines, like the treasurer's office, commissioner of revenue, um, fire because they have money.
Yep, there's fire and EMS ones that are being done too, yep.
All those people, um, wouldn't, who is going to be the person to maintain like their service line functionality? Let's say there's the upgrade for their service line or change in their workflows.
I see where you're getting at.
Mm-hmm.
I want to back up a second. There needs to be one person in charge of triggering the review for the city, and that person should be above all departments and responsible for communicating who is responsible for that. So if it's an EMS SOP, it should be the leader of the EMS group, if it's a finance SOP, it should be the leader of the finance.
Okay.
That being said, it's not always so clean. When you look at something like the MOA that we discussed, um, this time last month, that is across multiple departments, so you, that's why I say the person who's coordinating needs to be above all court departments, because they're going to have to get all departments to the table to review.
Okay, my, the other question is regards to the ERP, I'm on your, your current slide. Um, my, this position is the munis expert that we, that we funded, or is this another person? Who was the ERP administrator?
He actually was speaking to Mike.
I'm sorry.
The ERP administrator mentioned here is someone you already have on here?
Yeah, it's the munis position that we created, that's gonna be there. Um, okay, and just, just for clarification, the bank reconciliation module, that is the one that, once it's up and running, they can help do pre-audit work through the system, correct? That's the thing that we can even have?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else you want to say, Russ, I'm not, you good?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, Counselor Joyner?
Yeah, my question is, so on July first, the data in the munis system is going to be live?
On or about July first, yes.
Accurate data.
So what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to have a clean stop as of June thirtieth and put like a.
Yep.
A flag in the sand, and this is where we are right now. Because it is cleanest at the beginning of the fiscal year to do everything and have everything go live.
Yes.
With the exception of the employee expense reimbursement, as I said, it's gonna be running a little late. Then, for that period until official close, there's going to have to be reconciliations manually to get us over the hump there.
Okay.
And the ERP administrators and Russ are, are prepared and aware to.
That data should have some integrity, so from, from, so theoretically from July one forward, the data in munis is going to be the real deal, we can, we can.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that being said, if for July first, everything entered in July first.
I understand.
But you won't be fully closed from the prior fiscal year, because that won't happen till the end of the month.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have, yes, well, it's on the, it's on next steps.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before I continue moving ahead?
I, I, you're on industry now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, let me go back to ERP. So, um, I did speak to Mr. Branson and, um, Dr. Manker at the end of the council meeting recently here, one of these meetings that we had. Um, I did say I want to put on the agenda something in regards to, um, procurement when it comes to contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was something in a draft, um, financial ordinance that the former city attorney helped to create, um, but I want to flesh that out and actually have you guys expertise in it when it comes to, um, collective purchases, I'm, I'm using the wrong term, but it's getting on state contracts or other people's contracts to help lower the costs, right? Um, and in addition to that, using the same vendors for services, not just so proprietary, like we're using the same, going out and just picking someone. Um, that happens all the time, I'm, I'm talking about keep using the same vendor as well, right? Um, and also looking at, um, the vendors that we use that don't have contracts. Um, and so I do want to work on, I know you guys are probably addressed this, but I do want to have something for us in, in regards to setting some expectations there, because I, I, I said I was gonna put in the ass, and I have not done it yet, but I am going to do it today, actually, in regards to looking at which vendors in the city, um, receive the most funds. And I, I would like to do exercise and see how many of those actually have contracts, or how many of them's actually bid it out. Um, because, again, there is some gentleman's agreements and historical, uh, transactions that keep taking place, and we don't have that infrastructure there. So I did say that I wanted to circle back to that, and I see that you have this contract management module that you guys are talking about, but I do think it's important to clean up those contracts first before they enter them into the system in regards to which ones are valid, which ones we need to actually bid out, and which ones are improper, even legal.
What he said, no vendor should be working without a contract.
Whoa.
That being said, there's the garbage in, garbage out principle, right? Even if you upgrade the system, pardon the colloquial saying, you're still going to get the same garbage if you don't clean up the data first.
That's what she's saying.
Um, I can tell.
Clean it up before you.
So, yes, we are in complete agreement. Um, I do believe, and I'm gonna look to Russ, because you've looked at this in more detail than me, I believe as part of our work for the reconciliations, we've already done the analysis on the top vendors annually, so I think we can, we have that, I think Jack's got that. I will confirm and I will get back to you, but I'm pretty sure we have something that we can set on you, at least to get you started.
Okay.
Um, because we had to do that as part of our audit work.
Okay, thank you.
The piece that I'm not sure we have, that you're gonna have to trace back, is what, what's going on with the contracts.
Yes.
I just have the payment, so like, the payments based on what's going out to banks.
Yeah.
Doing does it at what it is that it worth for, uh?
Mr. Harris, uh, your mic is hot.
I'll put him on mute.
I can tell what he was saying to me.
I think Mr. Bob was saying something too, I, I can't.
Yeah, what are you saying? Yeah, we have that from, we have a list of, not only every vendor, but we also have a list by, you know, how much we spend, every vendor that's come out of the bank accounts.
Yeah.
So we've got it, we've got that.
See if we can charge the city man, the council disagrees, I'd like to, um, ask the manager to help get her staff to run through that list so we can start cross-checking, because obviously with attorney, we've been asked to make sure people send you contracts, and we know it's hit or miss. Um, but that needs to definitely be cleaned up for us, so I'll definitely be circling back, but I don't hear any objections there, but, um, definitely want to work on that project. Thank you.
Alright, my favorite topic, uh, the industry reconciliations and the Duber report. Uh, this is the one where I think, other than the SOPs, we've made a massive amount of progress since the last time I've been here. Uh, we had a very productive session today, about four hours with the industry partners, where we went through the methodology for the reconciliations with everyone present, um, as well, um, about, uh, two weeks ago, I think we had it, uh, we had a big sit-down session with Duber to go through the report as well and sort of get that buy-in. At this point, I'm cautiously optimistic that we are all talking and walking to the same drumbeat. Um, where we have risk from this team is now moving forward from now until the end of April, and I say that timing very specifically because these reconciliations tie up with the budget that Russ is going to present, that you guys are going to approve, so we need to have these meetings ahead of when the budget comes forth. Um, so the timing is really important, but we did commit to sit down with each of the industry partners individually to go through line by line, each one of their reconciliations. Uh, we've already done it with one partner, we've got three more to go. They have homework from today's session to get back to us with dates that they're available, and we will make ourselves available for their availability. But, um, everyone seemed pleased, I think, the overall consensus, if I'm reading the room, and I'm gonna also ask Russ for some, um, some off-the-cuff feedback here, but I think everyone was really happy to understand the methodology and understand some basis of where they are. They know that the report is unaudited, so nothing becomes final until all the audits are complete, but they, um, they now know what, you know, their, their swing is much narrower. Anything to add?
Uh, no.
Okay. Alright, um, and as far as the Duber study, that's being finalized. Also, I've asked Dicky, along with Dr. Manker, to prepare one list of projects that have to be done. We were working off of three different ones, and some, some things were someplace, and it was driving all of us crazy to keep track, so now there's one long spreadsheet that we're going to review with the partners, that sort of shows the source and what has to get done. It's not complete in the fact that we don't yet have the cost for some things, because there's still additional studies that have to be done, and we've talked about that before, but everything is now in one place, so as the commission moves through and pulls together the projects for next year, they're working off of one song sheet. So everyone should be treed up for, for finances, and everyone is working off of one song sheet. So other than the last outstanding item, which is, um, the studies to have the complete list, we're in really good shape here. Any questions? Alright. The next thing we've started doing since last we talked is, do you remember those ninety-eight open issues that have been on the SHADAS report forever? Um, well, they're starting to close. So it is not entirely our team's responsibility to close them, it is the city's responsibility to close them, but a lot of them will be closed by nature as we do the work. So system control, standard operating procedures, getting up-to-date reconciliations, some of the training we're doing on the standard operating procedures, we'll start to close these. Uh, we actually ended up closing four this past week. Um, and I suspect what will happen with these is that you'll see sort of trickles from now until about July, then you'll see a big chunk go down when the system goes live, and then as we start training in September and October, you'll start seeing another big chunk go down. But here's where this, no one ever strives, no municipality I've ever worked within all my years of doing audits has ever, you know, there's no such thing as zero findings. However, the sheer number of findings and the, um, impact of those findings could lead to material weaknesses, right? So when we started talking earlier, we said, listen, we think we can get you a clean audit financially, but you may still have outstanding material weaknesses until we get all of our work done. The idea is we want to close as many as possible to be able to demonstrate for the majority of the year you were in a controlled environment. And that, um, lessens the, uh, burden on the auditor when you start talking about completeness, because now, when you, when you see, um, automatic controls instead of manual detective controls in place, if you know you cannot approve a contract or pay a vendor without also having a PO, also having a receipt and all those things, then you're like, it's an automated contract, it's automatic control, there's nothing they have to really look at manually. So it becomes a different game, and it gets a most, more stable environment for your financials. So the more of these we can get closed, especially the ones that are the high-risk, greatest impact, um, better off we're gonna be as a city. So we're now adding, um, a meeting, I know Dr. Manker is really thrilled about this, but we're meeting with her now every week to go through the list of issues and talk about how we're gonna close them, and then we'll have to demonstrate to the external auditor on, you know, how we've closed them, and then they'll go through probably and retest these things, um, as we move through. Um, one thing to say is, these issues, it's a combination of control issues as well as just general business practice issues, so not all of these ninety-eight would potentially impact, um, the audit material weakness, they may just be better practices. Alright, um, the last thing, our second last thing I think to talk about today is the treasurer MOA that has been signed by both parties, which is a change since when last I was here talking with you. Uh, we actually had a long meeting today with Shannon and her group, um, and we've seen quite a bit of cooperation from her team as we move forward. Um, next week will be a good test because we've got, as I said, I think somewhere between eighty-five and a hundred and thirty processes to go through with them next week. So we've asked for their time, um, every day next week in some fashion, so that we can move through those. But we, uh, we hope that, um, we will have collaborative receipt of those, and they'll work through us, through them with us as a team. Last item here, actions needing counsel, um, the first two you've seen before, um, and I actually saw it on the agenda someplace here regarding the Finance Committee. Um, we also, to Bob's point, are going to schedule a two-to-three hour independent session in late June or early July um, to discuss audit progress, findings, and walk you through everything, as well as the ERP update. Right now, we've, we've given, I think, two dates. Um, we're looking, I think, at the first week and the first July meeting, um, somewhere around that timing, looks like when we'll, we'll do that. But that will give everyone a very strong, um, understanding of what went live July one, what happened with the city employees, how the change is impacting everyone, and what that means for your control structure. Um, the last piece is something I just added right before I printed this off. Um, it's becoming more and more apparent that communications as the city, um, have, we've got some work to do, and it's both internal and external, so it's within each silo, so let's call it finance, revenue, treasurer, et cetera, and how those groups work together. Um, you know, and of course, the services, EMS, fire, schools, everything, um, as well as external. Um, when we were talking with one of the divisions today, you know, they get asked a lot by residents, you know, where's everything going? And because there haven't been audits posted for many, many years, there's a bit of a black hole of information. So, you know, one of the things we should talk about is, once these audits go through and the CAFRs are signed off on, et cetera, excuse me, the audited financial reports are signed on, then, um, you know. then, um, you know, the recommendation would be that those get posted, et cetera, so that there's more information for everyone to review. So, um, at some point, we would love to sit down and talk about what the best path forward is for both internal and external communication with whomever you identify. But something to consider.
Whenever what? I'm sorry.
Hmm?
What was your last comment? Whenever?
Oh, with whoever you guys identify. Um, which, um, I'm sure would be under Dr. Manger's recommendation.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore.
I don't know if you recall, but in closed session, the last one you were in, I was like, we need to have a part two of this because there's some things I want to talk about, about what's being shared in the community. Um, is what you're talking about, internal and external communication. It needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Because different people are saying different things.
Mm-hmm.
But then also there's like this element of hysteria with what is also being shared, especially when it comes to inaccurate information. Um, and so I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. But then also, um, helping people to understand the differences between council, treasurer, community, um, commissioner of revenue and our roles there, what we do have purview on, what we don't have purview on, all of that needs to be addressed. Um, but I, I definitely support this, but also I feel like if we, I feel like that is, that needs to start now. Not necessarily when everything is caught up, right? Um, because I think part of the issue is people are hearing counselors comments. Um, we read newspaper comments and, um, again, depending on who you're listening to, your vantage point or of what is going on or how critical it is, is, is going to be skewed. Um, and it's hard for citizens to trust and understand the process if they're getting different perspectives. Um, additionally, we're talking about, um, recruiting people to be in high-level positions. Um, what they read in the paper, what they see in newspaper, inter, uh, news interviews is not a good recruitment tool. I'm not saying we don't need to be transparent. You're clearly having presentations to us monthly. But I do think that the verbiage that is used, um, is a driving force for a lot of the things that we're dealing with. So I, I certainly feel like there needs to be a conversation, um, sooner than later in regards to having, uh, talking points.
Mm-hmm.
And shared messaging, whether it is a graphic that we, or statements that we all agree. Um, and people want to, you know, dive into it deeper with people, of course, but there needs to be some uniformity around what exactly we're saying. Um, because I, I really do think it's, it's caused a lot of division unnecessarily um, when it comes to certain groups not really understanding the whole picture.
What I do, we call those leadership action plans. And so we have talking points that are at every level, both internal and external. Um, that being said, putting it on this document was meant to sort of raise it as something. So I think you and I are completely aligned in agreement that this is something that has to be done. It's, it's, it, within the city's purview. I don't know if it's in with our, you know, it's not within our scope, but I think, I agree, it's something that needs to be, and as, as we can support that, we will.
All right. Any other members of council have any comments or questions? Okay, CNN, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, go move on to communications from citizens. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
All persons addressing council shall step to the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal and pertinent abusive or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded, reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is the subject of the motion. See rules 405 and 406.
Okay. First person that have signed up for tonight is Sharaw Fuller. No? Okay. All right, I don't have anyone else signed up for communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Debbie Randolph. I'm from Ward One. Um, I want to speak to something that is now on the agenda, so I will need to ask council if they will waive the rules so that I can speak to something that is on the agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to waive the rules to allow, uh, Ms. Randolph to speak on an item that's on the agenda?
Some move. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
We're in the middle of roll call. Please continue.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Powell?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
All right.
Thank you, council. I appreciate the yes votes and expected some no's, so that's not unusual. Um, the issue that I wanted to address was the issue that, uh, was on the consent agenda and listed as a second and final reading. I communicated with you all via email earlier after the last meeting concerning the vote on this, uh, particular topic and, um, voiced my concern that the vote taken was not legal and that I encouraged council to look at Robert's Rules of Order and to talk to VML attorneys in lieu of that to understand, to understand whether or not it really was a legal vote or not. I don't believe you all have, uh, done that, but I don't know. Uh, but I would encourage you again because this is not, not really a second and final reading, nor is it something that I think is, um, uh, non-controversial. I'm glad to see that you all voted to allow it to come off of the consent agenda and to be on the regular agenda tonight for discussion. Um, but again, I am concerned that we are doing something mid-stream. If council were to decide on a four-three vote, that term limits would be something that they wouldn't want to have anybody be, uh, impacting in a run for council. That would, it, to possibly impact people that have said that they're running. Whether or not it is the person or the issue, I wouldn't be for that either during the timing of mid-stream of people going for a potential vote. Um, I encourage you, if you want to do this, to do, I'm, I'm sorry, did you say time? Oh, sorry. I encourage you that, uh, if you want to do this, do this when people haven't already started to run. And, um, you know, why didn't we do this sooner if it was such an important issue? And it would have impacted more people, uh, previously, I think, than it is now. Um, I ask you to consider this, to look at the detriment that it does, maybe just for one people, maybe two. But as I said, I wouldn't be for a term limit at this point. Do I want term limits? All, yes, very much so at this point. But I would not vote for it to, or want it to be impacting anybody on this council that, or anybody out of the community that was running and was, was mid-stream. And I appreciate you all listening and hearing me and, um, not talking while I'm talking, but thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on? All right.
I'm Aid Houser, Ward Five. I'd also like to speak and have the rules waived to speak on an item on the agenda.
Uh, it's already been waived, so you can go ahead.
All right. This is about this ordinance that is keeping popping up. This ordinance is an attempt to interfere with an election. If this ordinance was to be, uh, put in place, it should have been done before an election started, not after it started. This is an underhanded attempt to rig an election by our leadership. This is wrong on so many levels. This speaks volumes about our elected. I hope this will, this elected and, I can't read. This will be taken into consideration by the citizens at the polls at election time. This is the third time this ordinance has been heard. It's like a schoolyard bully not stopping till they get with their, get their way. There have been mentioned by several lawsuits over this ordinance. And if this ordinance passes, I hope these lawsuits are pursued. When mentioned to a one counselor after a meeting, you know this is going to bring lawsuits, their response was, well, it won't be the first. Must be nice to have the taxpayers to have to suffer for their childish antics. It's time for this foolishness to stop. I ask y'all to make the right decision. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak tonight? All right, come on up.
My name is Sharaw Fuller and I do live in Ward Five. Uh, I'm taking a slightly different tone. There were a couple of events coming up in the city that I'd like to bring to your attention beforehand versus you all being bombarded later. Um, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar, but there's a gentleman by the name of Nathaniel Garrett. He spoke before the council a few months back about this program called Guys With Ties that he's doing at Harry E. James. It started, uh, started out with about 10 young men who were in the fifth grade. They're down to six young men now. Um, the process of it is to help them grow in their self-esteem, respect, encouragement, you know, just overall, you know, being well-rounded citizens. At the end of their program, they are, um, actually earning ties and they've learned how to tie a tie. Each kid has to do a public speaking event and they will be graduating and getting their tie here soon. If I understand it correctly, it will be part, their graduation will be taking place with their fifth grade graduation. Um, their fifth grade graduation will be June 6th at 11:00 AM at Hopewell High School. It would be great if we could get some of the city counselors there because these boys have been working hard since the beginning of the year. Um, I know the boys, the, the districting or the zoning of the schools have led where Harry E. James comes out of Ward Five, but I believe it's in Ward Six or falls on a line of like Ward Two. It's, it's a very strange line where it sits. But whatever support could be given for that, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, because these kids have been working so, so hard. I mean, if you see the young men, they've been doing like a great, great job. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, also, um, I'm now the neighborhood watch captain for Ward Five and we're trying to put together some like family fun events, you know, to get the whole neighborhood out there for good events, for good, you know, better center-focused, family, family-centric, you know, events that are just more positive in the city. Because right now I feel like the city could just use some more positivity. Um, I'd like to get an opportunity, if I can, you know, if I need to speak with Dr. Manger, to get some time to speak with everyone, if we could do something like as a city or, you know, wards individually. But I'd like to work with everyone to see if we can, you know, put something together to, to make that a little bit easier. Um, and also, um, lastly, as the warmer weather is now coming, that means more kids are outside. Um, I'm not sure if there's a way that, um, the social media team for the city can post the curfews just to remind the parents of the posted curfew times. So that way they can know they, they do need to be in the house by a certain time to eliminate some of the violence and riffraff that may be happening. I don't know if that's an option. I'm just asking if it could be posted, if possible, please? So just a reminder, because obviously I'm a parent, but also for parents there, kids need to be home safe. And things are happening that kids need to be safer and we don't want anything to happen. So I'm just a firm believer in an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So if we can remind them, parents, keep your kids at home. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak tonight that didn't sign up? Okay, seeing no one. Want to move on to, uh, public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement as Mr. Ward comes up?
All persons addressing council shall step to the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address council as a body, not individual coun, counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal and pertinent abusive or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in the council chambers may be reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselor present, excluding any counselor who is the subject of the motion.
Okay. Mr. Ward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing about a proposed substantial amendment to the, uh, 2023-2024 CDBG program year. Just some quick background. Um, the City of Hopewell is a CDBG entitlement community. That just means that HUD provides us, uh, annual funding every year. We do not have to apply for it. Uh, HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and quality, affordable homes for all. And CDBG funds have to meet, uh, at least one of three national objectives. Number one being benefit to low to moderate income persons. Number two is prevention or elimination of slums and blight. And number three is urgent need, which typically falls under a, um, natural disaster. In our, in our consolidated plan that we are required to have by HUD, uh, we have the following goals, um, li, listed. And that would be rehabilitation of housing, uh, adult preschool literacy, household services, including, uh, those for the elderly and disabled, infrastructure improvements, recreation and homelessness prevention. So we are up against every year what's called a timeliness constraint. Uh, you may remember we, we came to you last year as well with a substantial amendment request for this very reason. HUD requires that the city spend, uh, 80% of its annual funding by May 2nd of each year. And that means we rely on our grantees, what we call a subrecipients, to spend their money, uh, because we grant this money out, to spend their money in a timely fashion and are held to that May 2nd, uh, date every year. So for the program year, we received $236,121. Uh, 80% expenditure means that we need to spend, uh, by May 2nd, $188,897. We have one particular, uh, subrecipient or grantee who, due to some major staffing challenges, has been unable to spend any money so far this program year. Uh, that subrecipient is rebuilding together. They were awarded funds to provide emergency home repair, just like Project Homes does in the city. They are understaffed and the staff that they do have are untrained. Uh, so it's a situation that came about with them after they were awarded these funds last year. So staff has come up with a proposal that was taken to the CDBG committee. I believe that was last week, week before, two weeks ago. Um, and that is in order for us to meet our timeliness requirement set by HUD that we are proposing the following. Um, to defund Rebuilding Together of their 2023 funding, which amounts, uh, which is in the amount of $66,897. Take that money and reprogram it and put it towards, uh, Westwood Park improvements, okay? We are also proposing to reprogram a portion of some unspent funds from previous years in the amount of $38,676 to also go to the Westwood Park Improvement Project. And then we're proposing to refund Rebuilding Together to continue, um, emergency home repair and either fund them out of, um, the next program year's money or unspent funds so that we, again, will have two, uh, emergency home repair providers in the city. Re, rebuilding together will, will be funded and, um, their contract will be honored. It just will come from a, a different funding source. So the CDBG committee, all this was presented to them two weeks ago. They, uh, voted four-zero, uh, to go with staff's recommendation. Um, I've got the total amounts here, um, just so you know exactly what you're working with. So in summary, it would be to defund Rebuilding Together of FY 23-24 funds in the amount of $66,897 and fund the Westwood Park Improvement Project with the same amount, $66,897, and then adding in $38,676 in unspent funds to bring a total of $1,005,573 for Westwood Park Improvements. We've worked closely with, um, the Director of, uh, Recreation and Parks, uh, about this project. This is the amount of funding that she needs, um, to make the major improvements to this park. This, this park was chosen in particular because it meets all the criteria that we need as a CDBG entitlement community. And that is, number one, this park is located And that is, number one, this park is located within a qualified census tract. It's also, um, the highest on Rec and Parks list of parks that needs improvements. We are also, um, in terms of readiness and, and the ability to spend this money by May second, we have already completed the environmental review record on this, uh, particular project and have received clearance on that. So if you are able to, uh, approve the request from staff as well as the request from the CDBG committee this evening, we will be able to meet our timeliness requirement by May second. Uh, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, uh, Counselor Denton? Oh, yours, you just wanna make a motion. Okay, are there any questions from members of council before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing tonight. All right.
Repub- blue, uh, Ward One. Mr. Ward, the, the con- the issue that you raised about the competency of this grantee, that they didn't have trained people, they didn't have a plan, they couldn't execute money. How is that going, what have you done to remedy that? And how do we know that this money that you're gonna reprogram and give to them is actually going to be used in a worthwhile way?
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Sure, I'd like to address the question that was posed, and that is, um, rebuilding together. They have been a subrecipient of the cities before. They know, they know what they're doing, um, overall as an agency. They have submitted at our request what we are calling a remediation plan. And that is how they are going to get back on track. Uh, we just received that plan earlier this week, um, and so we are working through them, um, or working with them to get through this plan. Tonight, I'm only asking, um, for the reprogramming of the funds for the park. Uh, we can come back later and make a decision. In fact, the CDBG committee has not decided on exactly where refunding will come from, whether it's next year's money or unspent funds. So we actually are not refunding rebuilding together this evening. All we're doing is reprogramming their money. Does that make sense? Yep, so we have additional time. I'm sorry.
Can you explain that further?
Yeah.
Reprograming, you're transferring the money from them to another organization, correct?
To another project, yes ma'am.
They're not getting that money.
They are not getting that money. And we will be coming back to the CDBG committee at a later time with a proposal on whether they've met the terms of their remediation plan and whether staff recommends funding them further. I was just saying there is an option to refund them in the future if we need to or decide to.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, uh, Counselor Denton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve FY twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-four CDBG budget amendment request to defund the rebuilding together of sixty-six thousand, eight ninety-seven, reallocate the sixty-six, eight ninety-seven plus thirty-eight thousand, six seventy-six in unspent funds from previous years to the Westwood Park Improvement Project.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right, moving on to, uh, regular business, R one, Dr. Manker.
Good evening, council. Um, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council tonight. Our CFO, Russ, Russ Branson and I will be delivering you the, um, proposed budget. I would just like to remind the council.
This is the.
I'm sorry.
Ad hoc city council subcommittee.
It's not Mr. Branson. Okay.
Not yet.
Close.
Close, close, but no cigar. The HR subcommittee was recommended by Counselor Pelham, um, as a way to review the, um, as a way to re- review the, the HR manual. Tonight, you have a resolution in hand that appoints two members from, from the council to create an ad hoc committee so we can begin reviewing sections of the manual and then reporting that manual back out to the, um, city council for any changes or any costs that will come to the council for those changes.
Okay, are there any questions for Dr. Manker? Okay, hearing none. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution before us?
Some move.
Okay, uh, motion's been made by Counselor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Uh, Counselor Denton for discussion.
Uh, yes, I, I guess I did not hear when you asked for volunteers for this ad hoc committee. And I would really like to be on there. Is there any way I can be on there?
Let's see why we can't add a third person? So are you asking for an amended motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Joyner, are you okay with the, um, amendment to add Counselor Denton? Are you okay with a friendly amendment to add Counselor Denton, uh, to the ad hoc committee?
Uh, I'm okay.
Okay, I think it was, what, Counselor Holloway? Are you okay with adding Counselor Denton to, as a friendly amendment to the, uh, ad hoc committee?
So now it becomes an official city council meeting, you have to.
That's right. That's right.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And keep minutes.
Probably not good.
And keep minutes.
And keep minutes.
Yep.
You can make a motion to postpone if, if you guys wanna discuss it.
No, it's not need to postpone, I just wanna make sure it's, it's appropriate.
We will have to advertise and, and there's reasons why we probably don't need to advertise. So maybe, maybe, I mean, um, the record, so we talked about this a couple of times, actually. Um, and I, you guys heard me say I wanna do it with Ms. Boom, and so that's why this is drafted this way. Now, um, Counselor Denton's showing interest, but we could do is just, um, help split, split it out. Maybe a group does a certain portion and then another group can do another part. I'm fine with that, you know? Um, so just for right, and you have me on record saying, just for right now, then we can swap it out. Can you at least sit down and figure out what chapters first and then divide it up and then say who wants to take next round or whatever? Is that fair? So that way we can split it up?
Yeah, so are you just saying to just postpone this and put a resolution up for chapters X to, uh, or X to Y and then Y to Z?
What I'm saying is let us move forward and come back with a recommendation to say, hey, here's the sections, here's the work sessions. Who wants to be tapped to do these, these sections? So we can, we can get the ball rolling and bring that back. And so you can say like, hey, I really wanna do travel and whatever. Then we say, okay, she got travel and whatever. If you say you wanna do reimbursements and whatever, then we can just divide up that way. So we don't further delay this, but we can make sure people can sign up. Okay. Okay.
So are we going with two now?
Yes.
All right.
And then we'll just bring back the recommendation that people can sign up. Is that fair?
That's fair.
All right. So the motion's to. So you all right with adding that friendly amendment into the motion? Are you Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
No.
The friendly amendment that they're going, yeah, that they're going to divide it up and bring it back to council. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, R two, uh, pulling back the protection of legitimate political activities of employees and restrictions. Counselor Denton, since you amended the agenda?
Now, I did amend it to, to bring it back here.
Okay.
To discuss.
Okay.
Ward the. They wanna make a motion, I'm not.
Okay, uh, Counselor Joyner?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, that we implement this policy January first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion on the floor is to approve the policy and begin implementation on January first of twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Holloway.
I'm not, I'm trying not to talk a lot today, cause quite frankly, this is something we've talked about several times. I'm gonna try to keep my personal feelings out of this. The bottom line is, is this, the city manager is responsible for all city employees. You cannot have someone who is a city employee report to the city manager, then also supervise and hire fire, evaluate and reprimand the city manager, whether it is this election cycle or next election cycle or any cycle after that. The reason why this has not been addressed is because each time has always been, it's a bad time. That's just, that's just it. This is not prevent people from running. It just avoids the conflict of interest if serving. Um, and that's the important part to remember. My only concern is that instead of the conversation being about ch- trying to prevent people, the question should be in my mind, why is there a push to try to control elections for wards that you don't serve in? Why is there a push to try to have people be on council that clearly have a conflict of interest with the city manager? What about that political motivation and agenda? It's not about trying to adhere to the law to make sure there's a, a limitation of conflict of interest. It's not following other standards set forth in other jurisdictions to avoid this very thing. Case in point, Prince George County has the exact same thing because of this particular issue. So starting stalling it is not going to eliminate the problem. It does not prevent people from running, it just prevents the conflict of interest if serving. And I'll just keep that as that. I know there's a lot of rumor mill, whatever, case may be, it, it's fine, but the fact of the matter is, I mean, the same thing that people can be said about why people support it, the same thing can be said about why people don't support it. Personal and political relationships, this is the bottom line. That's all I can say.
Okay, Counselor Holloway, then Counselor Denton?
Excuse me, um, I just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't have any rules or there were any state, um, or federal laws or anything that would prohibit what we're doing to put something of that nature in place now and there'd be a time limit or anything until January.
Not, not in my research, did, did I find that there was a time prescription? No.
Okay.
It's up to council.
Okay, Counselor Denton?
Um, to, to, to address Vice Mayor Gore's, um, comments, I don't believe this particular ordinance, um, points out that directors, there is a difference between a director and an employee. This ordinance said employees. Um, a director, um, reports to the city manager. They have director's meetings.
Point of information.
Which point of information?
Since my name recited and what I stated, can City Attorney please cite the definition of a city employee from the city charter and who they report to?
Pull the city charter up. I can read it. I've got so much stuff here. Um, chapter five, under the city charter, talks about the city manager and that person's responsibilities. Um, it says that, I don't, can you all hear me okay?
Can you speak in the mic?
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, chapter five of the city charter talks about the city manager and his or her responsibilities. And it says that the city manager is the chief executive officer of the city and is responsible to the council for the proper administrative government. Um, it talks about the terms. It, section two talks about the appointment, suspension and removal of officers and employees. The city manager has the, shall have the power to remove any officer or employee appointed by him or her for good cause and pending final action may suspend any officer or employee from duty for not more than sixty days. So your charter does not speak to the definition of an employee, but it does talk about what the city manager's role is with regard to governance of anyone employed by the city.
And I agree that the city manager's job is the CEO of the city. But the employees themselves, the regular employees do not report directly to the city manager. They have a director of their department and they report to that director. The director reports directly to the city manager. They have director's meetings, that's when, um, talk about budgets, talk about, uh, what's going on in the city. But the employees do not, yes, she could, they all come under the governance of the city manager. But as far as the actual reporting, we keep our city manager very busy. If every employee in the city had to go through the city manager. That's why you have a director of each department. And they take care of the issues there. And then if there is something on that level, they take, that director takes it to the city manager. And that's the way we've been working this government for a long time.
Okay, Counselor Joyner and then Vice Mayor Gore?
Yeah, uh, um, several weeks ago, um, I suggested that we take this, um, tack, that we, um, implement this policy come January one, given the fact that there are people that are out there that have been, uh, running and working under the assumption that they are eligible to run and if so elected, would be able to maintain their positions. Um, I, I do understand that, that in some jurisdictions, um, this is, you know, they allow city employees to, to run for public office and hold public office and others, they do not. Um, so there are, you know, there is a combination of jurisdictions, different outlooks. But I think that this, to have it implemented January one, twenty twenty-five is a, is a compromise and, um, one that I think is, um, valid in this particular case.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Holloway.
Oh, Counselor Pelham.
You can, Holloway can go first.
I'm not spoken yet.
Yeah, they, I didn't, they haven't spoken, they can go first.
Counselor Pelham, Holloway and then Gore.
City Attorney, the definition in the ordinance for employee, where did you get that from? The state or just a combination of what?
I, I derived it from a combination of the Virginia State Code as well as other jurisdictions that have this ordinance in place already.
Okay, and it, would it be appropriate? Okay, and it, would it be appropriate to, you added, you had Commonwealth Attorney, City Clerk of the City Court, the sheriff. Would it be appropriate to also add treasurer and the commission of revenue?
Yes ma'am, that's fine.
Okay, I mean, that's a part of the motion I would like to get added in or so. And also, the point that Ms. Denton was making was the fact that in this particular case, if a employee becomes a city counselor, he is, he works for the director. So it's the same effect is the problem is that he works with that director from eight to five. And then at night, his, his employee becomes directly his supervisor. And either way you look at it, just a total, it is, it is what it is. We, like Counsel, Vice Mayor Gore has spoken, we've put it off for two or three or four years, probably longer. And it's just a part of the state law that we, we should align ourselves with. And you can cherry pick, and that's what we're doing. You want, it's a law that you want something for, you, you say, I agree with it. Now we're cherry picking and deciding that we shouldn't vote in a law that the state say we should have. So, and no one's trying to undercut anyone's campaign. It's all, the person, if the person has worked long enough, they can retire, they can work freely for the city council. But the state says you just can't do both. And so, that, that would be my vote tonight, as I expressed before. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Holloway.
This seems to have been such a back and forth issue and so many thoughts and hearts are are in this. My, my question is, if we place this in place tonight to not be in effective until after the election and it's in place January one, what bearings will that end up having on persons who are then, at that time, in the seat if it is now an ordinance, Madam Attorney?
So your ordinance's effective date is going to be, if, if it's, the language is added that it will not be effective until January first of twenty twenty five? Whatever is in place now, which there is no ordinance, would be the status quo until the effective date that council has decided on.
So, so you don't assume office until January one? So, will that cause any complications with the person who has been newly elected, who's supposed to start January one, when that ordinance is in place?
They are, they would be bound by the effective date of January first, so yes, there would be, there would be a conflict there. Because the effective date is the date that they would start on council, in your example.
Okay, I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay, are there any objections to the call for the vote?
Do, I do have just one other thing.
Oh, I, I, we're sending the call for the vote.
Okay, before, I'll let you do that. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish CCR one? Okay, motion's been made and properly seconded. Yeah, until, yeah, is there any discussion?
I do have a, don't you need to do the budget?
We are. That's before.
Oh, you said CCR one, okay.
Okay, seeing no more lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Hold on, point of order.
We're in the middle of roll call.
Aren't we on a, I thought we was on a vote already?
Extend the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
I thought we was already in a motion, we can do that? Okay.
The motion was to extend the meeting until we finish CCR one.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, all right, Vice Mayor Gore.
Yeah, so I'll just say this, clearly your brain knows this is about Ward four and a candidate Ward four. To be frank, from my understanding, this candidate was recruited by members of council. So it makes sense why some members of council wouldn't want this to be passed. If we're talking about influence, if a person's employee has this much influence on council members, to not want to put something like this in place, just imagine if they are on council as an employee, the influence that they will have when it comes to governing. In terms of being a city employee, there is grievance processes that the city attorney and the city manager are a part of for employees. So whether you are the employee or a director or a staff member or anything in that chain of command, there is still grievance processes, the HR processes that you have to adhere to, that also poses a conflict of interest. In addition to voting on budget, on items that come before council, there are conflicts of interest. Also in addition to that, the bottom line is this, I don't think there should be a compromise in regards to holding up expectations. We sit here and talk about the finances, about needing to address and clean up everything in the city. Here we have a financial conflict of interest of being an employee and, and then trying to be on council when we council members can't be employees or serve on boards. To me, it is a blatant, like, it's just paralleling what we can already do. The other interest of this is, again, since I'll just be frank, it's about Ward four, there's other complications that also will make it hard for that candidate to run. There's other state laws that say public safety employees cannot endorse candidates and that's in state law. So I know people want to make this be particular to a person that's been recruited, but let's be clear, there's other things that would limit that person in particular. This law is about making sure the city does not have conflicts of interest. Council members serving as employees, employees serving on council. The other aspect of this ordinance, the original part was again, removing contracts with employees that are proper with state guidelines that we know are in existence. Just sat here and talked about contracts needing to be cleaned up earlier today. So we're sitting here about trying to address the city, improve hope or move forward. We can't cherry pick when we want to have a rule and when we don't want to have a rule, when we want to sit here and say we want to move hope forward and do what's right and then we don't want to move forward and do what's right because it benefits who we personally want to support. And so again, there, clear as day, no matter who it is, there is a conflict of interest. For those who are helping to recruit, find another candidate, it is fine. Or that person wins, that person cannot be employee and serve on council. Does not mean that you cannot run. Again, this is not trying to eliminate people from running, it's about eliminating the conflict of interest in serving. So there's no need to delay it in regards to that, but again, what, what we talked about, hope well moving forward, this is exactly what has led us in this spot that we're in right now. What is that, that rules for, rules for me but not for thee, Kevin McCarthy would say, same thing applies. So, I mean, be, just be honest and say, I recruited somebody to run, I'm trying to control the council to figure out who was on the board. Because there's, there's objectives to try to get rid of the city manager and other people, let's just be honest. I mean, we can laugh all we want to. I mean, I mean, but it's the truth. I mean, so people can be childish about it, but if you have enough to courage to sit here and just be not wanting to go with what is the standard and norm for years, then just be honest and say it. Now we can do the call for the vote.
All right, there's been a call for the vote. Is there any objection? All right, hearing no objections, Counselor Holloway.
I wanted to give a statement.
All right, well, we got to do the vote to end discussion first.
You can go ahead, I'll, I'll yield because you yield for me.
All right, so you're withdrawing your call for the vote, okay.
It, it's, um, my grandma said, can we all just get along? You know, when I was first running for this position, there were people who were commenting about me and they would make statements like, I don't know you. And then we even had a council member that said in my face, it was like, I just can't vote for somebody of your liking. And I said, well, what do you mean? Is this a color issue? Because you say you don't know me, you don't have any information about me, but you just can't support. That's kind of scary statement, that's the type of world we live in. This issue is literally begun the same type of spirit behind it, where there's so much division. And, and, and it's scary, we really live in a scary time. But I'm a firm believer, other word of God, and it stands tall and true, it says, many are the plans of a man's heart, but it's God's that prevails over it all. So no matter the direction it goes, his plan is going to prevail. Secondly, without calling her name, you know, statement was made about talking while you was talking, I was just simply stating that I didn't, I couldn't understand the word that you was using. I, I sound like you were saying termite and I was trying to get the clarification that it wasn't termite. The last time I was like, oh, she said term limits. So that's all I was saying, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful. But anyway, we can call for this vote.
Okay, there's been a motion for, or there's been a call for the vote, or is there any objection?
Can you repeat the, uh?
We're doing the call for the vote right now. So is there any objection before we move on to the motion?
I make a substitute motion.
Hold on, I want to see if there's objection for the call for the vote.
We'll withdraw the call for the vote. Can you restate the motion?
The motion is to approve the ordinance with an effective begin date of January first of twenty twenty five.
Instead of immediately.
Correct.
So that, is there a substitute motion? I'd like to make a, a substitute motion.
Okay, what's your substitute motion?
Substitute motion is to vote on the ordinance to be effective immediately.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the motion, or excuse me, to approve the resolution or an ordinance with an immediate effective date. Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris.
No.
Mayor Parton.
No.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
No.
Counselor Joyner.
No.
Okay, now motion falls back to the original, which is to approve the ordinance with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty five. Roll call.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes, if that's going to pass.
What, what is this now? This is the, this is the revised, the original motion with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty five.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
No.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay. Moving on to reports of the city manager, the FY twenty five proposed budget, Mr. Branson.
Yes, good evening, and the, the discussion tonight is, is more of an information discussion, we're not asking you to approve anything or make, take any actions. The state of Virginia has a requirement that by April first, we've submitted a balanced budget to the state, which we have done. I want to kind of go over what that is, what that, what that shows and, and just give that, an overview of that. So it'll be fairly quick, we're coming back on Thursday night to talk about options, we'll talk about that. So, so if we go to the second, first page of this. Thank you, so it's just to provide the overview and highlights of the twenty five budget, where we are now. So how do we get, what, what is included in a, in a balanced budget and talk about the next steps are coming for us to get to an approved budget? So go to next. Sorry, I don't have the things that I have control over. Okay, so, you know, we, in looking at the budget, I mean, this is the, these aren't my pillars. But, so we do look at, you know, we looked at how much do we have the stability of money and trying to match, I'll say the kinds of things we're trying to do is match the revenue available, expected revenue availability with what we're spending, so we're not using any, any reserves. And we're, we're making sure that we are building a budget that we can move forward with on a stable and balanced perspective. Thank you, yes, if we go to the next slide. Okay. So the total budget that has, that we've presented so far to council, we've done a revenue workshop and an expense revenue workshop, we also talked about expenses, it totals two hundred and seventeen million dollars. That includes about twenty nine million dollars of money that's kind of moving around, it shows up as expense somewhere, revenue somewhere else. There's six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that's been gentrified from the general fund available for capital. And so capital, which is kept in a separate fund, is primarily funded by general fund and then there may be other grant funds or things that come into place there. We need approximately three point nine million in that, in that range to fund all the kind of the priority projects, and right now we have six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So that's what we're going to be talking about a lot on Thursday. There's a proposed general fund operations of sixty six point seven million, that's an increase.
Mr. Harris, your mic is still live?
That's an increase of about four point three million dollars over last year. Part of that increase is coming, we have step, automatic steps, two and a half percent steps in public safety and public works. And we've approved, or, you know, what's proposed is a two and a half percent cost of living increase for everyone else. So it won't affect the step employees, just employees without steps. In addition, you have things like, you know, as we talked about, I think it was two weeks ago now, or last week, whenever we talked about that, we had our last Thursday night meeting. Was like the police are going up about a million dollars, right, so there's, there's other demands that are driving the budget forward as well. So combined, that's probably the cost of living, the health increase, right, which is about three hundred and sixty nine thousand, police increases and, and just other various increases throughout the department add up to that additional four point million dollars over last year. We go to the next slide. School operating funds, we're, we're proposing to keep the fund, funding level at the same level as this year and last year actually, so it will stay consistent. Again, we're not drawing from any unassigned fund balance, you know, right now we actually don't know what our unassigned fund balance is. That's, you know, good we're not depending on the money that we have in the bank. And we are asking for consideration of adjustments to the tax rates. And that's what we're going to be talking about on Thursday as a big piece of our conversation. So we go to the next slide, Brittany. So here's our, our current tax rates, real estate, personal property tax, machinery and tools, meals and lodging taxes. That's what we, the existing ones, and if we go to the next, the next page, we're going to have the following, we're proposing up to the following. This is as high as you can go because these what we're, these are what have been advertised. So taking the real estate up to a dollar twenty, personal property up to four dollars per hundred of assessed value, machinery and tools, three sixty, meals, six and a half percent, lodging, nine percent. I'm, I'm sure we'll have lots of lively discussion on this on Thursday. And I know some industry people have already said they plan to come and talk to you, so, but that's the discussion. And we want to try to, the other thing we'll try to do on Thursdays to give, I think, hopefully a reasonable path forward for how, how do we, you know, how do we get through to the next budget without creating too much controversy, but, you know, kind of doing. So we have some options that we're going to look at on Thursday as well to do that. So I don't, we don't need to do all of these increases to budget, balance our budget, that's the good news. But we, you know, we do need to, I think, you know, there's, need to allocate or get more money towards especially capital. And we're also trying to build reserves, right, we're trying to create just more money so you can do more of the things you need to do for the community. But it's, you know, balancing that over time. Okay, next slide. So the, the revenue that we're, that we've talked about, you know, has been, city manager's been involved, I've been involved. Commissioner of Revenue provided a lot of the data, we spent time talking through that. The real estate assessor, before she left, we do have a new real estate assessor who'll be started, interim one next week. Budget Director, Ramonda Carroll, and then Department Directors, the enterprise funds provide revenue from their particular operations. So let's go through. So let's go through, um, you know, let's go to the next slide and then we'll talk a little about, we've gone over some of these things. These are just kind of high, high level and small. I apologize for how small it is. These are for, for all of the funds, where, what the cost is to equal the two hundred and seventeen million dollars. Um, I want to say a couple of things about, because we talked a little about this earlier, where, um, that, uh, Heather talked about, we're in the midst of setting the final revenue and expense, or expense budget for like regional water. That will drive the, um, revenue budget, right? So we're, we're going to set the revenue to, to provide the right expenses. We had, we did have a very good meeting today. We'll have some follow-up meetings to get this done. But that will adjust. And we're also having, we started a discussion today on capital for them. Um, and we'll continue to have that over the next, um, several days as well. So we're in the midst of doing the regional water one, so that will adjust. So that's why, you know, we talked, this, there's, we're not asking for action on this. That is not the right number today. It will be the right number when we come back to you for adoption in May, uh, of the total budget. Then, oh, the other thing I'll point out is the schools. We have kind of the number they have, which is basically this year's number for what their budget is. They don't know yet as far as, unless it's been signed. I don't believe they know what their state money is going to be yet. So they actually don't have a total budget yet, um, either. Hopefully they will know, I think they have till the eighteenth to do all the, his veto time. Or maybe it's, maybe we're done. Are we done, do you know? I don't know. But it's soon. Well, we'll be through the veto time for the governor and find out if, um, what's been proposed has been beat or not. And if it, if it continues on. Last year they didn't know until the fall. But that's, that's also a placeholder in there. Uh, we're, we've been saying our number is pretty firm because we don't have a lot of room to do, um, very much right now, otherwise. If you go to the next slide, Brittany? This shows the, on the cap, on the, um, on the general fund, what our, the proposed budget was and what the adopted budget, um, was. So you can see, you know, the, the big increase, um, in, uh, where big increase in revenues are for, for these, um, coming up. So we do have pub, public service corporation, which is, um, utilities and whatnot, operating in the, in the city. Personal property tax, that the budget is up. This is one we're going to look at, we're going to look at more because it's also when we have high delinquencies on. But we'll take a look at that. Machinery and tools is up, a lot of these because of values and things that people have put in. So this kind of gives a list of where, where have we seen, um, increases in revenue? We've also seen, you know, real estate shows it's down a little. We're not, we're not in a reassessment, so that's, you know, basically flat. And then, um, use of ARPA funds, which we used last year. We're not proposing any use of ARPA funds for the budget this year. Okay, so then we have, the next slide is, um, proposed budget expenditures for all funds. And so that just gives that list, you know, that again, is the revenues are equal to the expenditures here. And we have the same issue on water renewal is that we're, you know, same issue as the revenue slide, right? We're still, we're still working out the water renewal, um, expenses, which will drive the revenues. And the schools, we're still waiting for their final numbers, uh, on there. But those, you know, those, those are kind of equal. And that's, you know, it's good that we're not underwater. I, I always like to see more revenues than, than expenses. So you have money, we'd be putting that money into reserves. The next slide, the, the thing that shows up here, this is the, again, the, um, the operating capital budget for general fund departments. And, you know, the, um, I think the city manager's amount reflects the fact that we moved, um, positions in there is the big one. And then you should see, um, where's, you know, police are up by eight hundred thousand, fire. So you're seeing that four and a half million is a lot of, um, a lot of little things here and there. You know, I mean, little things, a few hundred thousand here and there for a lot of departments, a big one in police, a lot in public works, and then in transfers were, were up as well. And so I've detailed the transfers out to the side just because for me personally, when I see transfers, a big number for transfers, my first question is, what are the transfers? And so these are the, these are the transfers. You can see there's a lot of support from the general fund to the other, other departments within the city primarily, right? So, um, public assistance, um, CSA, recreation, economic development, so all amount, um, healthy families, debt service. So we talked about, you know, debt service comes from a lot of places. We, food and lodging, a hundred percent of that goes to debt service. This is the additional amount that, um, the city pays into food and lodging. So for example, I'll give my pitch for food and lodging. If you increase food and lodging, that would increase the amount going to debt service and decrease the amount that would have to come out of the general fund, right, to transfer over? Um, because that's a hundred percent for debt service. The support of schools is the biggest piece. And then we have, again, the support of CIP, we'd like to find ways to get that amount up. So we can primarily get, you know, a lot of it's road projects, the biggest stuff, where we don't want to lose state and federal funding matches. Um, and so we want to, and I think there's again, a path to do that. Next slide, so we've talked, we talked about some of the, the highlights here, that the council did approve having the health increase be absorbed by the departments, uh, with no cost to employees, a two and a half percent COLA, step increases, continuation of the city vehicle leasing program. And that's, you know, partly because that, that's a, as you're paying for vehicles, that's costing us more. But we're also having vehicles, right, that are working and in good order. And, um, you know, it's, the leasing program is good for a city that doesn't have the money to invest, you know, set aside monies. Kind of forced the GND, you have to, you have to fund these things now. Keeping the school operating funding, uh, level. And then, um, again, we're limiting projects by, um, for capital. You know, again, we'd say we need reductions over six point two million to fund all CIP projects. I, I think there's at least about four million dollars that we really want to fund. And again, we'll talk on Thursday of a path forward in that. And the other thing is, you know, as we create a path forward to fund capital with, you know, however we do that, the, I think it's, this is, I like this slide because it says, it's not just next year's capital, but it's the year after and the year after and the year after, right? There's continual investment that needs to happen in the city across lots of different, uh, across lots of different areas. And then when you get to twenty twenty-nine, it goes way up. And that's because that's the, that's a program year, a target year for a new fire station. And so how, how we get there is not, we're not going to figure that out on Thursday. But these are things that we do need to start thinking about, right? How do we get to those milestones for things that are important? I've heard this, you know, come up in a, in a, um, a neighborhood meeting, right? That people are saying, when do we get a new fire station? Um, how are we going to do that? Um, and so just putting this on the list, putting it as a target, saying, hey, this is something we have to do, also should help our decisions now, right? About, we're going to make decisions now that will take a step, right, in that direction. And the last slide? Last slide, yep. Um, next steps. So, um, again, work session, talk budget and tax rate discussions. Um, and also again, kind of a, but that has to be in the context of how do we, how are we moving forward? How does this meet our goals right now? Then I think that that's followed on April sixteenth by adoption of a tax rate ordinance. And does that come on the sixteenth or the eleventh? Come on the sixteenth? The sixteenth. Then we're looking at May fourteenth for the kind of presentation of a final proposed budget. And May twenty-eighth for final approval, um, of the, the budget and the, and the school, with the school budgets as well. So hopefully, hopefully the school ha- has their budget. But again, we're, we're kind of limiting our, um, amount that we're proposing to provide for schools' operations, um, in this year. So that's, that's just a kind of a, you know, it's, it's probably a good overview for what we're going to go into Thursday. We're not asking you to do any actions. That's where we are. This is what we've also presented to the state as our balanced budget. So wanted you to know what that is. But we're not seeing it, right, as the final, as the end to our budget or where we're going to stop. Um, and we're going to come back and have further discussions on that.
Uh, Counselor Joyner?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you. This is really, um, a great overview of our budget, specifically working forward with the capital budget, looking five years ahead. I mean, something the city has never done.
Yeah, and I, 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 I'm going to promise this again, and I have it halfway done, is building a five-year model. So I'm going to keep saying it because then I have to present it. I, I won't, I won't be able to back out. Because it's, it is an important thing for the city to look at.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branson, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Pelham?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Great job. But, um, on Thursday, would you be presenting alternatives to different revenue approaches, providing council doesn't agree with the seven cent increase in property taxes?
Yes. Yeah, I, I have some ways to move forward if, if there's, if there's a, um, you know, I, I think a big disagreement on those bigger impact taxes. I, you know, I think it's something you still, you know, we have to look at and should look at and consider. I, again, I think within the context of a longer term plan as well, but, um.
Well, that's what I'm thinking about. If you do, do seven cent this year for what we need, and then you say in two thousand twenty-nine, we need forty-two million, what would that tax increase mean?
Right, so that's what, we can't do it all, we can't wait till twenty-nine, right? We have to, we have to start thinking now about what are the steps we need to take. Because, right, if you try to do it all in one year, you know, it just is too much, right? And it becomes overwhelming. So, yeah, that's the idea between a five, kind of looking ahead five years or even longer sometimes. And also, I will give you options because I think that's, I think we can, I think there are options. And, um, I, I think you also may be headed for, you know, kind of preliminary discussions with the new assessor from an assessment basis, just values are going up statewide. And we, we may actually get more money from real estate next year, just through the assessment process, again. Which, I knew we just had a big, um, assessment increase in twenty-three.
Uh, Counselor Denton?
I can't wait for Thursday night. I want to know where we're getting this four million.
Oh, yeah.
I, I saw the, the tax increases and I figured a little over two million there if we did them all. But I, I know that we can't, hopefully we don't have to do that, but, um.
Right, I, I will say, I'm not going to, you know, my plan does have some tax increases.
And, and I think we've realized that.
Yeah.
I mean, I've lived here all my life and you just, we've got to bite the bullet right now. And at least, let's see if we can do it for this one year and we may find out it doesn't hurt quite that bad.
Right, and, and hopefully things better, you know, yeah, so we'll have a discussion, right? That'll be the discussion.
But thank you. This, this is so clear and I really appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, seeing no lights? Thank you, Mr. Branson. All right, moving down to, uh, CCR one, uh, the expansion of the city council finance committee. So it's no surprise that, um, Mr. Bob and his team has made a recommendation to us, uh, for a couple of months now. And, um, you know, I think that it's a good idea to move forward with their recommendation, to expand the finance committee from its current structure, to include all members of city council, and to include the treasurer and commissioner of revenue. So that way, uh, we can have more, uh, open discussions. And also that way citizens know more about the finances. And I think that it will actually help in the long run. So Counselor Denton and then Vice Mayor Gore.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we, um, expand the, um, finance committee to include all members of city council, the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue. And.
Okay.
Effective?
Effective July one.
Yeah, effective July one.
Okay.
Second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Uh, I have Counselor Gore, excuse me, Vice Mayor Gore, and then Counselor Holloway. And then, I don't know if, might have been hitting a diff, another light. Mr. Pelham, did you have your light?
No.
Okay.
I was trying to second it.
Oh, okay. Counselor Holloway?
We're discussing this in a closed session item, I thought this was. And I thought we, uh, voted to, uh, hold this off. The majority of council had already decided to, uh, I can't remember if we ended up bringing it to a vote, but I definitely know we had a consensus that we weren't going to do it. Did I miss something?
Yeah, there has been a, uh, there was a majority that said that they wanted to hold off on this. And it has come up in two subsequent, uh, Robert Bob reports that we need to take action on this. And, you know, yeah, exactly. I'll say this could be number three. So, yeah, last meeting, I had it on the agenda. And I, you know, apologized for, you know, the, um, resolutions not being submitted timely. So I withdrew it to move to this meeting so everyone had a chance to read it.
I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't agree to this. Just like, for example, the clerk's office has a request to get information in, um, for our agenda by deadline. And some of these things are presented to us on the night of. So we, as the governing body, do not have, don't even have the access to that information prior to the citizens. And the whole, that's the whole purpose of electing governing officials. But again, I, I will say, if the clerk could send out reminders to make certain that anybody that's having a presentation must present it because she controls that, uh, portion. But, uh, uh, yeah, I still don't agree to it. That's, that's all my comment.
Uh, seeing no other lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
He said, he said Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes. Counselor Denton? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. With that, the meeting has been adjourned.